Now that there are school board representation there, is the Budget Committee going to work with the school board to ask the questions that stop them from making decisions prior?
Yeah.
December 15?
Sure.
Yeah, as long as we can get the answers.
I'm done.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
All right, so now you want to go over the tax issue?
That's...
Is that it? Oh, sorry, do you want to...
Well, I wanted to not even speak for school. My name is Kristy Heickel again, and I'm actually going to put on my hat as a teacher. I teach health. I teach four different health classes during the day in four different classrooms. I have to bump a teacher every time from another room. I move from space to space to space. And so, not just for growth, not for new, guidance also has to go into other people's classrooms and teach there. So please remember that there are also people that work in the building currently that do the best we can for our students, and we go to them. But it would be really nice to have a spot where they can find us, where we don't have to bump a regular classroom teacher from working in their room, so that we can give the students the best services possible. So it's not just growth when some of us are saying, "We need our own space." Does that make sense? I wanted you to understand that there are people that roam in the building. They carry books in carts down the hallway from room to room to go to the students.
But we've also taken classrooms over there and made them into offices, when the offices should be out in the modulators.
I'm just saying that it would be nice, there are many teachers that roam, but just...
Yeah, but that would free up classrooms.
I know. Thank you.
Just quickly, I'd like to...
Do you want any more, or...
I just wanted it to be clear that it's not just for growth, it's for what's currently packed into that building right now. I've been there 15 years, I've seen the growth, I've seen the changes, up and down. We are tight in there. We wanted to provide for the students, we need, we would need space to give them the best. And I'm all about providing students with the very best services we can. We have some of the best teachers. Now let's help them by giving them the space they need.
Thank you.
I would also like to...
Can I say something?
Well...
In 88, in 88, we had the high school in there. Now with just the elementary in there, you've got five or six more students. By your enrollment, we've only grown five or six students.
All right.
Just very quickly, since we're bringing up the issue of space, I thank everybody for the public input, but we didn't really address the fact that one of the crucial needs in the building is getting rid of the modulators and getting the students inside the building, where we know that they are safe and where we know that they are in a healthy environment for learning. Part of the reason why, from what I understand in the history, is that we did have even more modulators when the high school was there, and we did remove some modulators when the high school left.
But why wouldn't the school move the offices out to the modules and keep the students in the building?
Probably because of the supervision is greater in the building. We have eight classrooms outside and 40 inside.
Mm-hmm. So the supervision's greater inside?
Unfortunately. We try to get out there.
So you can...
The teachers are out there, the students aren't alone by any means, but will it be safer for them to be in the building? Absolutely.
Then move the offices out of the building and stop taking up classrooms with offices.
Then we're outside.
All right. Public, more public input?
How much...
Oh, oh.
How much space will we talk to this 15-year-old pick up?
You'll be on camera. You need to come up and announce your name for public input, sorry.
I'm just wondering how much space we're taking up in the, in the current buildings that are in there and that we're trying to replace.
Eight.
I think most people in town would probably agree that maybe those buildings should be replaced.
Eight classrooms.
Eight classrooms, but how much square footage do you know?
There's probably 900 square feet per classroom in a modular. I would have to actually go check.
I understood it was, each building is about 1,700 square feet, and there's four buildings, does that sound right?
And each modular is separated into...
To two sections.
Two sections.
Two classrooms.
According to the information I have, it's about 6,800 square feet with the four buildings.
That was not about right.
If you go with that number and you primarily do what you said, to take care of the temporary buildings and not have them there anymore, which probably most people in town would agree that's probably a good idea, they probably would too.
Yep.
It would be 6,800 square feet currently, if you doubled that space, it'd be about 14,000, say. Build a building, according to Reed Data, their construction, large construction company, it puts out a lot of cost estimates. They built a building in concrete for $112, $112 per square foot. This is a concrete building. So that'd be about 1.6 million. Now, I know you're going to be doing renovations as well, but maybe some local contractors or something can fix windows, do some painting, and try to put some people in town to work as well. So, but 1.6 million, that's a lot less than 18 million. It's just...
Yep.
An awful big number. That's, I think that's probably what town will actually have a problem with. Did you get other estimates besides the one that you got?
This is an estimate, not a bid.
Yeah.
It'll go out to bid if it's passed by the voters in March.
It's an awful big number.
Sounds big number.
Yeah. And it, you know, that's, if you go by the number of students, 550 students, that's $33,000 a student. 18 million dollars.
Let me ask you a question, though. Where are you putting these 14,000 square feet?
All right. In the backside, I don't know, but I don't know all the details, I'm just trying to help out.
See, that's the problem. That's part of the, that's part of the issue.
Not enough room there, out in the backside there somewhere.
I mean, if you go into that building, it's like a maze, and that's what we're trying to get rid of.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not...
That would have to be determined, it's just that the number is just so big.
I mean, we have, we have looked, yeah. Obviously, 18 million is a big number, but that, you know, you gotta...
The population in Alton's about 5,200, so you're talking about three, let's see, what a lot of, per person...
Absolutely.
You know, population-wise, if I have the number, but do the math. But that's just what I wanted to add.
I think in addition to the space, we do have to address the things, the actual needs of the building.
The renovations, fixing the windows, you said, and flooring.
Well, we do have a roof that has to be repaired. We've got some serious issues with the pressure, just regular have to be repaired, the ventilation and the windows, those things. Our issue in terms of where we can put another addition...
Right.
Is the parking and the field space issue.
Yeah. I would, I'd try to explore some of those areas before, you know, committing to an 18...
We've had a committee for five years, we would have loved to have had you on the committee.
Okay. No, I haven't been getting input in the past, but whoops. Maybe I will in the future, I don't know.
Thanks. Okay. Any other public input?
My name is Linda Willman. I'm a parent of a child at Alton Central School, and she started there in first grade, she's now in seventh grade. I can tell you that she would, this is going to get a little personal, but she would come home from school and want to let me know that she didn't want to use the restrooms in the building because of the condition that they were in. And I'm not just talking the cleanliness of the building, it's just the actual condition of being able to use the facilities, I won't go into any more detail than that. And she's a seventh grader now, and there is an absolutely gorgeous area that they can now go use those facilities within the building. But I think I would be remiss as a parent and a teacher in not trying to advocate for all of the other little people within that building that I know she's not alone in how she felt. I'm also a teacher at the school, and I can tell you that we moved here to Alton because we loved this community, we wanted the community feel, we love the community, and I was very fortunate when I got a job working for Alton Central School, I had the pleasure of working in one of the modulators. I worked within the school and I also moved out to a modular. It is not something I think that is difficult for the teachers to deal with, because if you're a teacher and you're passionate about what you do, you will work anywhere. I think it comes down to the children. I know that there's some discrepancies about what we are here for. I am here for all of the students within the school regarding the budget and regarding the renovation. I can tell you that we need this renovation. As a taxpayer and as a mother, I would ask you to please consider this for all of the students within our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Melissa McNeil, I'm a mom. I have two children at Alton Central School. I have a nine-year-old, he's in third grade, and a six-year-old in first grade. They love the school, they're boys, they don't care that the toilets don't flush every other day. But they tell me about it. And, and I'm, I'm not meaning to be funny, they think it's funny. I, I worry. I worry for their health. I also worry because I, I'm a teacher there, and my first two years at Alton Central, this is my fourth year, thank you, for the first two years there, I taught in the modular. Front one, where people think it's the office because there's a sign that says "to office", and they think it's pointing to my room. And it's like Linda Willman was saying, if you're a teacher, you don't know, I don't notice how hot it can be or how freezing cold it can be, but I do feel badly for the students when it gets over 100 degrees in June, in, when we get back to school in the fall, in September. When it rains, the kids can't sit near the windows because the rain actually pours into. I've never seen it before, my first year, it was pouring out, we had a really wet year, and a couple of the kids, it was raining so hard and the kids didn't even flinch, and I turned around and I looked at them, I said, "What's happening? What's happening to the roof?" And they're like, "Oh, it always floods." And that was three years ago. And the other, the last part, my modular sits right over the septic. And they've got, we can't, a couple days before our school, we can't go in there because they've got to pump it out, and you smell it all year, that septic. And it's, again, I can deal with it, I feel very lucky to have a job there, I love working, but those kids have no choice. And I'm just putting it out there. We, it's not about growth, it's about health and being safe and being able to learn in that environment that I'm worried about.
Thanks.
It is a dry well. It really is a dry well.
It's a dry well?
It's a dry well.
Is there more?
Doesn't mean there isn't stuff going into it, but it's a dry well.
Put some lime in it, cool the smell. Lime in it.
Rebecca McKeller, and I just wanted to point out that with the, the reason that offices might not be out in the modulators, and I don't know this for sure, but I know that there are standards of square footage that need to be met per student according to state and federal law, and that there's a certain amount of exits that need to be available within a room in order for students to be in it. And that might be one of the many reasons that offices are in the main building and not in the modulators. Also, when I go into that school, I'm nervous about the fact that the office administration cannot see who is entering and exiting the building. That's a real concern. Not, you know, somebody coming in there with a gun is not going to go, "Oh, hi, office, I'm here, give me my name tag." So that's not going to happen, and we can't pretend that there aren't people out there that that couldn't happen to our kids. Also, I've done out the math for what my increase would be. My house is estimated a little bit under $200,000, but I rounded up, so a $200,000 home with the increase of 1.35% in the year 2014, that would be an extra $270 that I'd be spending in taxes, which would break down to $22.50 a month. I am more than willing to spend $22.50 a month so that I know that my kids are being properly supervised with people walking in and out of that school, and I know that they're in a comfortable environment. That's worth $23 a month to me.
It's not percentage.
Any more? So Kathy, do you want to go over the pink sheet?
Sure. I know with last night's public hearing, and truly from where everyone's talking from the pocket, I am a person of figure, so I wanted to come up with tangible numbers to float around, to speak about as much or as little as anyone wants to hear. Obviously, the pink sheet that you all are holding, one side of it is the standalone figures, that is the direct tax impact. The other side shows how, how by, as Kathy Holt had put earlier, how by one bond debt schedule being, you know, the debt being paid off, and the, let's say, the new one pick up, how seamless the transition can be, and at the, at the height, the most a taxpayer could see would be a .25 increase from the previous year. With that being said, that scenario at the height, the largest increase to, over the previous year for the tax impact, I have done 10 different scenarios on Alton homes. I spent today, for a little while, going through the Vision database here, that's on the website, which is a fabulous tool, and I took and started with houses, mine's first, wanted to see what it was going to do for me. Based on my tax rate, which I took my tax bill and emulated how it's all configured, make sure it tied to what I was figuring. For me, I have a house, granted I have just added on, but the old value of my house was Taking the tax rate of today and adding 25 cents to the school rate would only increase my taxes $36.65 one year's worth. I've gone from $146,600 house, net valuation, of course, assessed valuation with the town, all the way up to a house that's $524,400.
You should pick a middle range, like a 250.
So a middle range.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see anywhere in here where it would show the people how much their tax rate would be if the high school bond was done and we didn't, didn't start any new debt.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, and, and do these numbers reflect what we're already paying in the bond? Because you're saying seamless, so we're paying 68 cents per thousand, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that 68 cents filtered into this? Because we're still at that side.
The other side, the other side.
On the other side.
Yep. We tried to be as transparent as possible to give the public the figures. One side is the, is the simple tax impact of each warrant article. The other side is showing how it filters through if something were to pass in March. Granted, you can take the numbers and figure them any way you want. Of course, I'm going to figure them so that you can see what this could do...
If it passed in March.
What this could do. So anywhere Kathy had asked if I could take a middle of the road, a net value of an assessed valuation here in Alton of a $291,000 house with the, you know, land and building is an increase per year of $72.75. I'm more than willing to make copies for everyone to take a look at what these calculate to. Like I said, I have 10 different variations from all the different values of the houses here in town.
The highest one, at 524.
52440 is $131.10 per year more.
I also have a question about the 18 million dollar. How much, how much of the 18 million, whatever, some odd dollars is appropriated for land purchase?
None.
Nothing? And there's no current negotiations or talks about purchasing land?
Absolutely none.
That's just that?
That's a non-issue.
So if you wanted to purchase land, then that would be another thing, come to the voters. Okay. So the maximum based, well, not maximum, obviously, there are houses more than 524,000, but looking at the general...
Range.
Range.
Yep.
$131 in the most expensive year...
Of this past, possible impact of the bond.
All right. Anything else? So we'll move to warrant article four. Should Article III be adopted, shall the Alton School District raise and appropriate the sum of $1,750,000 to add to geothermal heating and cooling to the Alton Central School, including equipment installation, professional service fees, site development fees, and any other items incidental to or necessary for the said heating and cooling system to authorize the issuance of not more than $1,750,000 of bonds and notes in accordance with the provision of the Municipal Finance Act, and authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $39,861.11 for the first year's interest payment on the bond. This article is contingent on a, on the, upon the approval of Article III. And the Budget Committee did not approve this one.
A question, to Mr. Cross.
Yep.
Do you have that information I requested yesterday?
And public input.
She's not really a public guy. Yeah. I can pass it down this way. Just to break down what they are. Figure this out.
Thank you very much.
Another one? Linda?
All right.
Question that I run you a spreadsheet of potential payback for the expenditure of the geothermal heat, and unfortunately, these huge amounts of numbers here are those paybacks. Just to give you a little bit of explanation, Mr. Miller asked me to give a, I guess, the best-case scenario, because realize, this is a crystal ball-type prediction. But I went and researched the price of heating oil from 2005 to 2011, and that's published with a state has some average that they published for the state of New Hampshire. And it increased 62%, which is 10% a year. I used 9% to be a little bit conservative, and a 3% increase on electric rates. I have no basis for the 3% increase on electric rates, I just figured that you should have something in there to increase your electric rates.
Excuse me, just a question on what you just said. Is this the best-case, worst-case, or most probable scenario?
I would tell you that this is the most probable scenario.
Probable, not the best case, the most probable scenario.
Well, I guess I didn't run a best case, I ran what I thought was an accurate representation of where we're going to end up.
Thank you.
And you can play with this 100 times if you want to change it to 8% or whatever you think it should be. So the ground-source heat pump, which is really the effect of a geothermal system, is comprised of about 50% cost of in wells, and the wells obviously have no life to them. They're a closed-loop system, they don't, you don't draw off water off of them like you do with some residential systems, if you've heard of that. So basically, we look at the well portion of a geothermal system as forever. There shouldn't be, save some natural disaster, anything that would affect the well portion. Then the next portion of that is a certain proportion of duck work, which I don't have it broken out into pieces, and then pumps, and then some equipment. So the ground-source heat pumps right now are known to save over 64% over oil presently right now. I used 50%, just again, to be conservative, so that we're not taking it out to the outlet limit. What you see on these limit, on these figures here over on the left-hand side is a present heating cost for a similar energy-efficient regular oil heat school. Not your school now, because I think you're spending more than that. But in fairness, to make a fair comparison, we used a third of a gallon per square foot. Right now, you're probably headed towards a half a gallon per square foot or something in that range. So that, the top line there is the existing high-efficient school. The next line down is the ground-source heat pump. Again, 50% of the $126 gives you the $63,000 cost. And then your annual savings. I flat-rated the cost of this over $127,000 over 20 years. I'm not an accountant, I just did it so we had a number we could look at from a comparison standpoint. You can see the net savings in the first year ends up being a negative number because it's $127,000 bond cost, you're only saving $68,000. But you can also see that in year five, that becomes a positive number. Underneath it, I just did accumulative savings, I mean, we can run this any way you want it, but just to try to get that information out to people. That bottom level layer is the cumulative savings. You can see at year 15, it pays back the bond in its entirety. Whether or not you choose, or the board chooses to prepay the bond is way beyond my expertise, but I thought what Mr. Miller was asking for is to just get some concept of what this stuff can do to save you in the long run. That's what the scenario there does. The next scenario, if you look down just below, accumulative savings, escalator at 5% and 3% for electricity. You go down to probably the most unlikely scenario, which is an escalator of 3% for the oil, and escalator of 1.5% for the electricity. I truly wish this would happen, I don't really think it's going to happen. But in a worst-case scenario, the positive comes in, positive cash flow, not complete payoff, but positive cash flow comes in at year 18, and then it pays off at year 22. I really think that's an unlikely scenario. And maybe it's an average of the top one and the bottom one, but I think it really illustrates that the, that that product does work. And what, what I haven't taken out of here because of the length of paper that would be, is to start looking at this cumulative savings over the next 50 years. It's stunning. It's really an investment upfront, which unfortunately is expensive, but the payback is truly stunning to me in the long run. Anyone that's looking at lowering their operating costs, which usually is a very high piece of a budget, this is a very important thing to do to lower an operating cost.
What's the average life of the system?
Well, you know, I'm not sure that there's been enough, around enough to tell you the average life of the system. There is compressors, and there are pumps, there's a lot of piping, there's a lot of duck work. And so obviously, those components have a failure rate. I, in year 20, started throwing in $10,000 a year for whatever.
What does the salesman say? It should last forever, it should last 30 years?
No, 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 there's, there's, there just isn't a number that I can give you that says in year 17. I mean, it could be that in year 14, you're going to have to put some money into it, and it might skip to year 23, you'll have to put some money into it. So I just threw in $10,000 a year at year 20 because that's a reasonable expectation for pumps and things like that.
And our electric bill will increase because of the pumps, correct?
But this, this factors electric costs, that's why we have the escalator of 3% for electric costs. So yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right, it's an electrical-driven source of energy. Now, the good thing about that is that...
And the pumps run 24/7, correct?
No.
No, they don't?
They run when you need the heat out of the system.
Or when you need to cool it.
Or when you need to cool it, which obviously is optional.
So it's pretty much, I mean, so the pumps will be running off and on year-round?
No, no, they wouldn't run year-round.
Well, you're either heating or cooling.
Only if you choose to cool. The cooling here really is...
The cooling now, I'm thinking we're going to choose to cool.
Well, that, that goes back, that goes back to a budget process, I suppose, you know. And I can't really, all I can really address is the heat side of it. You have to heat, and the heat side of it's very accurate. I put in some money for cooling. Obviously, if you cool all summer, that number would go up, it is more efficient to cool that way, but I can't...
But then we're not going to see, it would take us beyond year 20 to see this pay for itself if we start cooling all summer, correct?
Absolutely. But why would you cool all summer?
Because we do now. We have air conditioners in the school, correct? We just bought half a dozen last year.
You don't cool the entire, you don't cool the entire school, I don't think. You have isolated places in the school.
This will be on a zone, so you try.
That's right, that's right. I mean, you'll have various zones.
To you, if it's there, it's going to get used. I really, I feel that way.
What's the, what's the...
There wouldn't be a difference from the air conditioners.
Do you have a professional estimation? What's the big rat's nest? What's, what's your worst, what's your worst fear that could happen? For instance, things have happened up at the high school that nobody expected, okay? After a few years, what can blow, and are we indemnified under warranty if they do blow?
Your compressors typically end up with a five-to-10-year warranty, we can increase that number, but you pay for it. I mean, it's like an extended warranty. So I mean, you usually would stick in the five-to-10-year range and expect that you're getting a good enough quality in that range attached to it that you're going to go out further than that. Some of the problems we had in the high school really unrelated geothermal. They were, you know, found asbestos issues and found structural issues that had to be corrected, so they were really very unrelated to this one piece of the deal.
And you'd expect that, from what you said, that any significant cost wouldn't hit before year 14 or year... year 14 or year 18?
Well, it's a crystal ball. I'll be very honest with you. It could happen in year 10. It isn't supposed to happen in year 10.
What's a compressor go for?
There are smaller compressors, so I don't know the price off the top of my head. So it's not like you're working with three units in the whole school. You're working with multiple units, so their fractional cost, you know, is thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars. This has been very helpful. I appreciate your work. And I would have brought this before if we had requested it. I'm sorry I missed your other meeting, but I did have a grievance commitment, and if I bagged off on them, they wouldn't have been happy either. So, I apologize I couldn't make it, but sometimes it is conflict for me.
And these numbers accurately reflect the outcome of geothermal in New Hampshire in this particular zone?
Correct.
Correct.
And realize, I've used 50 percent when they're telling me we can now do 70 percent.
Okay.
So I've got a fudge factor in that. And I've used 9 percent for the oil increase when the last five or six years has been 10 percent. So there's a couple of safety factors that built into that also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, can I just ask you a question? Presently, we use room air conditioners?
Pardon me?
Presently, we use room air conditioners in, I think, I don't know how many of our rooms, some of our rooms. If we were to replace those with the AC available through geothermal, do we save money?
You definitely save money, and I did factor in $10,000 of usage of room air conditioners right now for a savings of $5,000. And it is a very important note that Mrs. Howard's made, that the more you use it, the more it's going to cost. It's a very optional, the air conditioning comes because it's very much like a refrigerator. If you turn it the other direction, you get the cooling out of it. So it's there, not necessarily to be abused, but it's there. We're not paying extra to put an element in to get AC out of it. It's there because of the nature of the system, but it does cause electricity to run.
Thank you.
A quick clarification, when you were giving us the numbers earlier, that includes all three of the warrant articles? The worst-case scenario one, or...
No, I simply...
Was that just for the building, the major renovation we worked?
Just for the one large ACS renovation one. I did not want to throw in any others. I really wanted to get to the meat and the potatoes, and I'll call it the big one. Yep.
We think this is pretty good.
Yeah. Any other public input on that article? All right, moving on. Article five. If Article III be adopted, shall the Alton School District raise and appropriate the sum of $2,075,555 and no cents to construct a gymnasium at the Alton Central School, including equipment, professional service fees, site development costs, and any other item incidental to and/or necessary for said gymnasium, to authorize the issuance of not more than $2, 755,555 and no cents of bonds and notes in accordance with the provision of the Municipal Finance Act, and authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to raise the appropriation, an additional sum of $47,162.64 for the first year's interest payment on the bond. This article is contingent upon approval of Article three. And this was added because you guys wanted to, some people wanted to include the gym too, right?
Yeah, but there was also a petition article submitted last night, so it would have been added either way.
Okay. Any public input on this?
My name is Ava Pla. I was the one who put in this petition article, and it was directly in response to whatever happened at the grounds meeting where the gym got pulled out. I felt that this is such an important community resource, not just a school resource. These gyms are community resources that can be used year-round, everybody in this room and the children. And pulling it out really limited things down. And I want to bring up a situation that occurred just in this last couple of weeks. As you may or may not know, I also do the computers for the town offices and whatnot. So I happened to be in the Parks and Rec building when it turned out that the entire basketball program got jeopardized because the Prospect Mountain High School could no longer support the 650 people who were going to be involved with basketball in Prospect Mountain on Saturdays, because there was an issue with the varsity basketball team who needed to move to Saturday.
They don't use the...
There's a number of issues, I'm sorry.
They don't use the middle school?
Who doesn't use the middle school?
The basketball people, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec does.
They may be doing that now, but they had to displace other people.
Yes, they did.
So it was a decision in which 12 students who were doing the varsity basketball displaced 650 students over to ACS, who displaced some other people in it. And it occurs to me that if we have a larger, better facility, these things wouldn't happen, and we could also be using these at night for more adult programs. This is, I think, is a wonderful community resource, and not just for the students. What's our student population? It was 548?
549 now.
We gained a student, 549.
We lost one and gained two.
There's also 58 homeschool students who can also use this facility. So that's 607 students who could use this facility directly, as well as the community in general. That was my entire point for bringing the petition forward, and then the school board decided to take it on, so I just let him take it and run with it.
Okay.
I agree, so I'm building it.
Thank you. Steve's got questions for the school board?
For the school board. We have a wonderful gym at the high school. Why aren't you using the high school gym?
We are using the high school gym. What do you mean?
For the community.
As a varsity high school. Don't forget, there's four basketball teams up there that have practices and games, so that gym is pretty much fully utilized. I don't know when you would think that they would be able to use it when it's not being used. I mean, it's used all the time during basketball season, being there tonight.
And if there was a brand-new gym now, it wouldn't be a second gym, so it wouldn't be able to be used any more often than the gym now, correct?
The, it would be a gym, a cafeteria, whatever, it would be a multipurpose area where the gym is presently, and this would be another gym. So it would be used for phys ed during the day, which I know has issues, and then it could be, and the gym would be used as a gym.
So there would be two gyms in that school, is that what you're saying?
No, there wouldn't be two gyms.
There's one gym.
Right.
But I'm saying, there's one gym's being used now for whatever, you know, basketball, volleyball, or whatever, right? By changing gyms, that doesn't, that's not going to affect the usage from the community one bit.
Unless they can use the gym...
They can use the multipurpose area.
Area for other things. The basketball courts won't still be there, though.
As long as it's not during lunch.
As long as it's not during lunch.
Because that's where the kids are going to eat lunch.
If a basketball team is practicing, what's available to the community?
Either the gym or the multipurpose area. Most likely, if it's a basketball team, they would be in the gym, so the multipurpose area would be available.
And the multipurpose area has hoops?
Yes. It'll be the present gym.
It's the current gym.
So you're going to have two gyms?
So we will have two gyms.
Just making it a different name.
You can double a size, or triple a size, whatever you want to call it, it's two gyms.
Just calling it a different name.
Except for lunch.
Okay. I just want to know if there's a second gym or not. Okay, it's not replacing, it's a new gym. It's an additional gym.
Correct.
Okay.
If you want to see the original design that it was in the gym, we do have that here. The new gym is here.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, I'm looking at it upside down, so with my phone...
That's the orange?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. This is the new gym, and this is what is presently, the gymnasium. That will become really the cafeteria for kids. Right now, our cafeteria is too small. But this will have, become the cafeteria. The present kitchen will expand into what is presently the cafeteria, so that we can accommodate more kitchen space. They're really crowded in there. I don't know if you've ever tried to work in there. I have. So that will expand to become a bigger kitchen. We will be able to feed more students in a bigger kitchen. But when that space is not being used as a cafeteria, or big, large group study area for multiple things, assemblies, et cetera, which right now, we have to cancel gym in order to have an assembly, then that will be able to be used for other things, especially at night. We do really struggle to schedule because we do have requests from the community. And Prospect Mountain is scheduled tight because of the number of sports that they have.
How many square feet is that old space going to be?
I have no idea.
The old space is 5,800 square feet.
What's the new space?
10,000, including storage and bathrooms, so we can lock it off at night.
Okay, so, it's probably, because I just don't understand the configuration, you're doubling the square footage of the gym...
It's going from 58 to 10,000. There's lobby, there's bathrooms and storage, so the next square footage...
You're increasing the space 40 percent, what, usage?
Not the actual gym.
That's the lobby, everything.
I've seen, I mean, the defense of the gym is that they're doubled, they're doubled once right now, so that we can use that one at night for community things and still have a place for kids to practice. We're not going to, the stage is going to stay in the existing building, existing gym space, so any kind of theatrical things will happen in the existing gym.
But that's bad, Dave.
So I'm educating that, that action in the next space. And it's also friendly, it's really making a game in there. It's very, very tight, clearances around the facility. Really, I don't want to say it's dangerous, but it's potentially hazardous to students. I mean, it's only at the distance, it's big, it's long. Kids are getting bigger now, you know, sixth graders are six feet sometimes, so the run that they need, stop, and their layup is quite short. Space inside is close to three to four feet. So it increases all those kind of things, but doesn't duplicate the stage, which is perfectly sufficient for what we need.
A question to the school board. Whose job or responsibility is it to provide space for community activities in Alton? Is it the town's responsibility, or is it the school's responsibility?
The school is for the community use. There is a request that needs to go through the school in order to get use of the facility.
No, whose ultimate responsibility is it to provide space, right, for community activities in the town of Alton, for adults? Is it the town of Alton, or is it the school?
I would guess the town of Alton.
Thank you.
Or maybe the groups of adults who want to have the, I mean, they could do fundraising and build a road for them.
Do we have more public input on this?
I just wanted to say that my husband was at a basketball practice for my son, who's in second grade, and, well, he's on the third, fourth grade basketball team. But, you know, these are not big kids, they're not adults playing in the gym, and he still felt like it was unsafe. The bleachers are too close to the clearance of the court, kids could easily be hurt, and then you're dealing with lawsuits, and that's a lot of money.
You can also slide the bleachers back.
You can.
Except when they're occupied.
But is that safe for the people sitting in the bleachers? I mean, it's...
You can find something wrong with any gym, or school, or anything. I mean...
Well, Virgil, for practices, it's okay to move the bleachers back, but for a game, you need the spectators there, unless...
In New Durham, they sit on the stage. They don't have bleachers, they sit up on the stage, New Durham.
I don't know that would accommodate everybody, but...
No, it doesn't accommodate the crowd that's...
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, the stage is packed over there, and people are standing outside.
Forget, New Durham's stage is on the side. Ours is behind a basket.
I know, but I'm just saying, we've got bleachers, but New Durham doesn't have half the room we got, and they've been using it for 30 years like that.
And we commented on how small it was when we went there.
All right. Any more public input?
My name is Kristy Heickel. I am a parent in this community, and I'm also the phys ed teacher. I spend quite a bit of time in this room, and I hope you understand that it would be very remiss of me to not support this. I do not think physical fitness is frivolous. I do not think health is a waste. Last year, I ran two after-school programs, one called Move and Groove for K through 2, and another one called Get Up and Go, where we were teaching pre-sport, pre-skill activities to children. Mr. Perrin and I, Russ Perrin's the other phys ed teacher, we can't do that this year. There is no time available for the Physical Education Department to run after-school programs in our own building, because we need to make room for sports, for Parks and Rec. We bend, we bend, we bend, we bend.
Why wouldn't the school come first?
Because we look at the numbers that we can do, the commitment that we can make, past practices. We're starting something new. It was relatively successful last year, but I would feel horrible if we wanted to start something new this year, and we bumped wonderful existing programs. You don't take away what is good, and what is already going really well, to try something new. And I would love to see more. I want more physical activity. I want more opportunities. Times have changed. When I was a little girl, I would go outside and play, and my mom would flick the lights, and I would come home. And most parents can't do that anymore. They don't have a place to send their kids after school, where they know they are safe and supervised, and taught proper fitness activities, where they can learn and be safe. And I will also put in that my equipment room, where I store things, and for those of you who've been in the building, it's in the old locker room. I store the walls next to a toilet. I store my gym mats in a shower. That space could be improved. It would benefit our students. I'd like the taxpayers to have the opportunity to say, yes, this is something we can do, or no, it is not. I'm always going to benefit from more physical activity in this town. I will never say, hey, let's take away from this so we can do this. These are good programs that are already there. We squeeze them in, we make it work, but we can do more. And I'd like support for that. And that's what I've asked of the community, and that's why I ask this to go forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Lynda Willman here again. I'm sure you can appreciate the delicate hats that we're wearing this evening, being parents and teachers at the school. I'd like to speak as a parent first. As I said earlier, my daughter has been in the school for years, and she has participated through Parks and Rec, and she basically plays every sport under the sun. So if there is a dance at the school, they can't have their practice, or they can't have a game there. And so, you know, for a number of reasons, I think it would be beneficial for the students at Alton Central School to have this new area, so that they can have two things going on at the same time. So that's my taxpayer slash parent suggestion. Speaking as a teacher in the school, we have really ramped up the services that we have after school and the programming, as Mrs. Heickel said, for after-school activities. We share the cafeteria with Weight Watchers. They come in, and, you know, we've, I'd like to say, we've battled a little bit about where we can go. And as Kristy said, we don't want to move anybody out of their classrooms. Teachers are there after school, doing their planning, and it can be disruptive for a volunteer group to go into a classroom where they're doing something really loud and they're trying to have a meeting at the same time. So, that's my input. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Why does Weight Watchers take precedent over the kids?
I believe, I don't know if I can speak to that or not officially, but I believe they pay to use the building, and they are allowed to...
We have the community center too, down the bay, that Weight Watchers and stuff can use.
Well, I think, you know, I was listening to what you were saying before about whose responsibility is it, you know, the town or the school for these things, and I think, and all the requests for facilities use actually come through my office at some point. And I know that the district has tried really hard to make sure that there's always cooperation with the towns, and I think that if the space is there, logically, we want to use it efficiently, because we don't want to say no and possibly leave something empty. No, you have to get your own gym. You know, we do want to cooperate. We do believe that there's not, there shouldn't be that much of a separation between the school and the town, because we all have usually a common goal.
The town may not have great facilities, but the town has alternative facilities.
Oh, yeah.
And what I don't understand is why Mrs. Heickel's program would even consider not take precedent over a community activity.
It's over our after-school sports. It's our after-school sports. The teams need to practice. It's still all those kids. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it starts with Weight, I mean, we... Well, as far as Weight Wa, I mean, we have the community center, we have the Mount Major Building over in West Alton.
Not big enough.
What ain't big enough? The West Alton one?
I haven't seen the West Alton one, but you, if I have your school, thirty, I've seen the parking lot.
The issue is location.
We've moved them around in our facility to make sure that we-
It's an optimal approach, which is also very good.
Hi. More public input?
Again, I'm Steve Renner. Just pull up a chair. Um, I'm, I'm gonna speak to the, to something that was mentioned earlier about the security of the existing gym. I routinely play volleyball at this time on Tuesday nights at the gym, at the Alton Central School Gym. We used to play at the high school, until, because of an incident not involving our, our group, but a different group, that, that for a period of time, no one had access to the facility without supervised use. That's an entirely different issue. I think that there can be some things done that, that free up, particularly Prospect Mountain High School, for community use, as we talked about earlier with the baseball But when we're in there playing volleyball, to be honest, I feel like I could walk anywhere around that building that I wanted to. The door is unlocked to the outside of that building. Anybody could walk in that building at that point.
That's up to the janitors to have it locked down from the high school and the elementary part. That's up to the janitors.
Well, unfortunately, for the access that we have, there is no double-door closure. If you walk in that door, yes, there's one to the left, as you would go towards the cafeteria, but there's not one to the right. We could access, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall seeing double doors anywhere-
Down to the music room and-
That lead up to the music room, to the art room, or downstairs to the, the locker rooms, the, the gym offices, or the phys ed offices. So, so it's not a secure location. The way that, that this new gym would be designed is that it can be sealed off. You can still have access to storage, if you needed to, to borrow equipment or utilize equipment, you'd still have access to restrooms, but the rest of the building would be sealed off. And that would be true for, for, for any community event, you know, if Parks and Rec were to come in there and use that facility, it's sealed off. The other thing is, just a, a positive note about the Prospect Mountain basketball issue. I work with the younger kids, the first and second graders, and we were not bumped from our time slot, because we're early enough in the mornings on Saturdays. And the benefit of using that facility is the hoops there are adjustable. If I were to do this program at Alton Central School, we don't have adjustable hoops, and there's no way that a first or second grader can shoot a ball properly at a 10-foot hoop. So fortunately, Prospect has the ability for us to lower the hoops, and had we been bumped out of there, we wouldn't have been able to teach kids shooting. Certainly could have worked on other fundamentals of the game, but it's an added bonus that kids get to play a scrimmage at the end of the day, and actually take a few shots on the net. So that's a positive thing, and I'm sure that that's something that would be implemented in the new gym as well. In terms of the community owning a gym, and the school owning a gym, that was mentioned, why not, why not have the community build one? The community is building one, it just happens to be attached to the school. There's no reason, I'm not gonna buy two kayaks, so I can kayak at Mary Meeting, and I could kayak in Winnipeg. I'm gonna buy one kayak and figure out a way to take it where I need to take it. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have two gyms as it is, two and a half gyms, if you consider that cafetorium another public, large facility space, and I think that's gonna be adequate for it to meet all the needs of the community and the school.
Thank you. Any more public input? Ex article. Article six. An event that Article five is defeated to see if the school district will vote to rate, vote to create an expendable trust fund under provision RSA 19820- known as the geothermal energy expendable trust fund for the purpose of contracting and installing a geothermal heating system for the Alton Central School facilities, further to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000, no sense, towards this purpose, and to name the school board as agents to expend this fund. This warrant article is to be void and have no effect if warrant article four is approved by the voters, the Alton School Board recommends. And we didn't, as a preliminary, as a budget pick committee, we did not recommend that one. Any public input on that? Seeing none?
I have some, I have que, I have questions. At $50,000 a year, it'll take 35 years before you get a geothermal unit. My best guess is the technology 35 years from now will make this null and void, and there'll be other, some other technology, you know, that'll probably be more appropriate at, at that point. That's number one. Number two, if this is adopted, is Mr. Kraus here?
No.
Oh. If, if this, this is, if this is adopted, I would have, I'd have the, you know, the same, a couple of questions. Number one is, why wouldn't you bond this for, for $1,750,000 right now? And that's an alternative, have a 20-year bond for $1,750,000. And I would like to see the comparative cost between a bond and $50,000, and $50,000 a year. And if, it seems to me that if we keep putting in $50,000 a year, you know, there's gonna be years periodically where this may be turned down, so you can't guarantee it's gonna be passed for 35 straight years. Therefore, this, the chances are, this may go as long as 40 years or 50 years, and it seems, you know, us, you know, it's questionable whether this makes sense, unless you're either gonna do it or not do it. But, you know, to, to say, for instance, you know, we're gonna fix the windows eventually, you know-
That's been 20 years.
You know, you know, and that's a forever deal. The bathroom's a forever deal, you know, and I understand the reasons for it, but this is just another forever deal, where we're putting $50,000 every year in to, you know, a fund that, quite frankly, I don't think would, you know, probably be used in my lifetime. So my question is, why wouldn't you, my alt, my alternative would be to bond outside, if, if this is gonna work, and this makes sense to me, the numbers make sense, you bond the seven, you bond the $1,750,000 right now, and put it in. If it doesn't pass, if the school doesn't pass, and the only reason you wouldn't do that is because if it doesn't pass this year, the school, the, the renovation of the school, you'd want to bring it the next year, the next year, and the next year.
You'll hold a special meeting.
And you would probably have this as a white elephant, si, you know, you know, already bonded out.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand why you would bond something for geothermal.
What happens, for instance, if, if the renovation doesn't pass, the $18 million-
Correct.
Okay? And I don't, and I have no, you know, I don't know one way or the other. I'm in favor of some renovation, you know, I'm just not sure what right now. But if, if that doesn't pass, you bond this. Once that bond passes, have you made a commitment not to renovate and put this into the school? Or can it be used for the new school? In other words, with the pipes, the way they're, they're moved-
Okay.
Is, is it portable?
Okay. I, I think I can actually answer most of your question.
Okay.
And that's why it's worded the way it is, very carefully, some of the articles are The Buildings and Grounds Committee, and we do have the chair of the committee here tonight, Marilyn Dean, so if I'm doing anything wrong, I'm sure Marilyn will help correct me. The Buildings and Grounds Committee was very clear that when the project total came in, the, the total cost was higher than anticipated, and at that time also, the anticipated interest rate on that bond was higher than we anticipated. And so the committee did a lot of soul-searching and said, if we remove the cost of the gym, and we put the geothermal as a separate warrant article, so people can see that that's something that they can do, it will be a cost savings over time, but if they really don't want to do it, we'll have it as a separate article. Let's take the gym off, put the geothermal out as a separate warrant article, so that they can see that cost as a separate cost, and vote it in, recognizing that we will do our best to educate them as a cost savings long-term. So, that's why you have two separate warrant articles for the cost of the renovation, rebuild, and addition, and the cost for a geothermal. Both the cost of the rebuild and the geothermal will be bonded. So the 18, eight, and the 17, five will be part of a bond, and we will do them together. The second geothermal will do two things. If we do not get the rebuild, then we will not obviously do a geothermal. If, however, the rebuild is close, and the voters vote for the geothermal, we will have set aside some money as a savings plan, and have a sense that people want to do geothermal when we do the rebuild. So it's kind of like getting a sense of where the voters are going. If they don't vote for the geothermal, we will have a sense of that as well. So it gives us two things. Money set aside in preparation for a geothermal heating system, and gives us a sense of what the voters are thinking about this as a program. We could say, no, we're not going to do it, but it's a, it's a way to save, and get a sense of public opinion at the same time.
Would've been easier to do a poll.
Well, we've not had very good luck with polls. We've gotten small amounts of people telling us basically 50/50.
Wouldn't it make more sense to put the two geothermal articles together, so they, so instead of on separate pages, maybe, so they can look at them side by side?
We actually talked, we actually talked about placement, and we felt that that would be more confusing.
How is that?
Put the three articles that will be bonded together, and put the other geothermal after that, so that it didn't look like, why am we doing two geothermals together?
Well, to me, it looks like you want geothermal for the new building, but if you don't get it, you want to put money, you want to take money anyways and put it in an account.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Because we're gonna get geothermal just slammed down our throat.
We're not trying to slam it down your throat, we're trying to find out if you want it.
If we say no here-
Well, you-
Then it should be no here.
Not necessarily.
I mean, well, what you're saying is-
What if you say no because you don't want to bond at this time?
Right.
Then you ask for geothermal down the road, not on the same thing, so it feels like you're slamming it down our throat, like you, the school, that's how the school does it, they're gonna get it one way or the other.
We've talked about the fact that generally speaking, people save money to set aside for something that they know comes up in their future. Your water heater, you know, is seven years old, you know that it's probably going to hit the maximum life, you start saving for it now. So that when it does go, you don't get a huge hit. When your car is coming to its end of its life, and you fixed it, and fixed it, and fixed it-
This is not a new hit. This is not repairing, this is a brand-new item.
Absolutely.
And if we say no for geothermal, then that should mean no, not put money aside in an account, because we're gonna get it one way or the other.
Let the voters decide.
Yep. Public input?
Virgil, can I just call your attention to the last sentence of this warrant article before the recommendation section? This warrant article to be void and have no effect if Article four is approved, is approved by the voters, and I just wanted to-
But what I'm saying is, if Article four ain't approved, you're putting money aside, because we're gonna get geothermal no matter what. One way or the other, you're gonna get your geothermal, and I'll guarantee it.
Start raising and appropriating and setting money aside, that's what that money is for. You can't spend it on anything else.
But it ain't gonna matter, because one way or the other, they're gonna get it.
But if you vote no for both, then we're not getting it no matter what.
But if this passes, then there's no going back, the voters don't have a, have a way to say no. Now, we, you know, okay, so it's-
But they can vote no this time, that's what they can do. They can vote, they always have the option of voting yes or no. If they don't want geothermal, vote no for both of them, and there's no-
Right.
Just vote no. They have an option. Correct?
Right. Any other input?
I make the assumption that the Alton voters can figure this out.
Yeah. Hi. I say we take a five-minute recess, because I need to-
Take a five?
Ten minutes, five minutes, five minutes is good. I'll call the meeting back to order at 9:15. Hi. I would accept a motion to recess until Thursday, if the board would so incline. Because I heard some people would like that, from the administration, so.
Recessing until Thursday now?
Yeah. Yep.
Could we at least get through Article eight, since I know that we have people-
Article eight, I don't even, I just got put in my lap. I don't, I haven't even looked at Article eight.
We have to read it first.
I can't do anything with Article eight, so that's, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, that's the teacher's contract.
Yeah, I just got that tonight. So.
Can I ask a question? When was negotiations finished for the, um-
I actually don't know anything about negotiations, so I'll have to defer to somebody else.
Negotiations were finished on the 22nd of December.
The 22nd?
22th of December.
Okay, today-
Deiation.
And today is January?
Well, then it had to be ratified by the teachers' union, and they went on break, so they couldn't ratify it until they came back on Monday, the 2nd.
Yeah.
On Monday, the 3rd, and then we needed to have, the school board needed to ratify it, we didn't have a meeting until the 9th.
You couldn't have called a separate ratification meeting?
Well, we thought that Prospect was gonna have a meeting, and then that one didn't happen, so we didn't.
Okay.
All right. So I'll take a motion to recess until Thursday.
Motion to recess until Thursday.
Yep.
It's already been seconded.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That'll be at 6 o'clock.
Wait a minute, Lauren has something to say.
Oh, Lauren?
Hearing. I just would like a copy of the old teacher's contract. Current teacher's contract.